Richmond meeting to order, March 9, 2021. If everybody can please stand for the budget allegiance. Like to welcome everybody tonight. Our first item up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There is no additions at this time. I'd love for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening with no addition.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
At this time, we will open up our public hearing for Street Project for 2021 with an overview done by our city engineer, Dave.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Everybody hear me okay? Hope I'm not yet. I don't stop myself from doing that. I'm used to speaking without a microphone. All right, welcome to the presentation on the 2021 Street Improvements here in Richmond. This is a part of the former 429 Assessment Process. This is the first hearing in that process. Many of you may remember that we held this hearing about two years ago on a similar project. It's been re-held with a new project scope. All right, so what's going to happen tonight? The mayor opened the public hearing already. I'm going to provide a presentation. I will try to make it brief. I can promise you it is not overly exciting, so I'll try to go through it as fast as I can by still hitting the high spots. Then when we're done, I'll take questions. If people have questions on specifics of the project, then the council will take input. If you guys have comments about the project, and then I close the public hearing with the council acting on another date whether the project moves forward. All right, so this is the notice you saw on your letter here, and it was also in the paper. This is the area being improved in words. This is certainly not something they want to read tonight. This is a little better. So this map shows the streets that are being improved. Plus, we added on the green here, which is a seal code, which is done as a maintenance activity. And we just put it on there to note that this project is going to touch most of Richmond. People on the maintenance portion aren't here this evening. That's not a noticeable item, but they are able to certainly see construction near their homes as well. All right, so how does this project come about? We started with the capital improvement plan. This capital improvement plan was started back in 2002. It's been updated many times since, and it is the basis of our projects and how we select our projects moving forward. So at that time, and like I said, periodically updated, we go through and reevaluate all the streets, sewer, water, storm sewer in town, and we put it on this list of what the projects are pending here. So this is actually the plan after the large project was completed on Main Street. On Main Street and Grant and Hall, you can actually see a portion that was completed here with previous projects. So we identified four primary areas at that time. Portions of these have been completed with an overlay where the utilities were good enough. The city had some funds available to do an overlay on those streets. And in areas that are not shown this evening, it's because they've already through that overlay process. All right, so what happened in the past? So this, we're going to focus on projects that happened after the year 2000, pretty much. 2002, the project. 2008, there was a large project, and we did a large project in 2014. So you can see that we try to do every three to five years, trying to track ourselves so we won't fall behind on those streets. We will probably do for this project more in the 2018, 2019 range, but as we're standing here in 2021, we need a little bit of catch-up. All right, this is just a map showing exactly what I said on the last slide. It shows the year the improvements were done and where they were done, and it ties into gotten from them in the past. We've asked for a member from the Ozil Beer and Water and Sewer Resources to handle some of the storm sewer items that we have in our project here. So pretty much, we've asked for anybody that's willing to give cities money, we've asked. And that's all in order to reduce the cost to you guys. All right, so what's out there now? I'll start with sanitary sewer. Certainly, you guys know the condition of the streets. The streets are in rough shape. Right now is a really great time to, if you're an engineer, to see where the problems are. When you have frozen ground and water sitting on the surface, maybe it's not quite as bad as it was last year when we had the rain on top of the snow, but it's still, you know that. But let's talk about the sanitary sewer. So what's out there right now? We have clay pipe in the ground. Clay pipe was installed commonly all the way up through like the 80s or thereabouts, where there's a transition to plastic. Clay pipe is good stuff. It's inert. It doesn't react to things, but it is prone to crack, breaking, and rot. The sections of clay are very small. They're usually like four-foot sections, so there are multiple joints. And tree roots are looking for a really easy source of water and nutrients, and sanitary sewer is a wonderful source. So some of those trees that we all look as a benefit in our yard are causing problems in our sanitary sewer system. We've been had backups in town because of them. So what are we looking at here? This figure you're going to see a whole lot of times tonight because it's a really good representation of what's happening in our streets that most people aren't aware of. So we're talking about, right now, we're talking about the letter C here. C and D. C is our sanitary sewer that's in the street. Is this pipe here running parallel? Usually, it's right around the center end of the roadway. And C and D are the portions of the private service that go all the way to your home. C is within the city right-of-way. B is privately owned by yourselves, and can be made of a whole bunch of different materials, depending upon when it was installed. There's lots of different pipe types. Most of what we see in town is clay. There are other places that have a called orange wood, which is like a compressed tar paper pipe. It's interesting stuff. So there's a lot of stuff out there in town, but we're looking to make it all one system so that everything flows well for us. Show some pictures here. This thing's sanitary sewer. Now, this is in Richmond. This is the pipes underneath your streets. What are we looking at here? We are looking at the inside of a pipe taken by a remote video camera that we send down the pipes. And what they do is they go through, they clean the pipes, and then run the camera through. So this is after the pipes are cleaned. Run the camera through to see what's down there. Top picture here is roots at a particular joint in the pipe. So these are, this is not a service. This is just a joint in the pipe where the roots have entered. Now, why did they enter? The gasket was probably rolled, or there was some other crevice that allowed them in, and you can see they've joined that. So the picture on the bottom is a picture of somebody that connected a sewer service to a pipe after it was installed. So after we install them, we install a factory connection to the pipe. This was done after the fact where there was no connection, so they broke it in pretty much with a hammer, as you would see. Now, this one actually isn't too bad because the roots were able to be pulled off to the side by the cutter. You can see them coming in here, and they were probably much larger before they cleaned the pipe. This is an example of a, this is a metal service pipe, but probably, probably a cast iron pipe potentially. Really, it's really difficult to tell what it is based on that. But this one was holding up a very large thing of roots. I was actually So this was actually holding up the roots, and they can't get the camera past this pipe. It's a little deceiving how far that's sticking into the pipe. The camera's not very big, and it couldn't get past. After the roots were gotten out of the sewer here, we still can't get it past. So this is where roots are going to collect in the future on this one. So it happens to be on for a street. Just to show you that plastic pipe isn't immune, there is one spot where we do have some plastic pipe where we will not be replacing, but we're going to have to fix that particular spot because roots are in there. Just another root ball. This is more conducive to what's actually in the pipe before we flush them. This one is still attached. Certainly, you can see it's an attractive thing. We won't grow on that one. Here's examples of cracked and broken pipe. Top pipes are cracked around the top. Scale is very difficult. These cracks are not enormous, but they are certainly open. You can actually see exposed soil in the top one. The bottom picture here, it's about a two-inch diameter hole in the bottom of the pipe. With the sandy soils we have in Richmond, that's a problem. We start getting holes in our pipe because when there's water flowing over those, they have to pull soil in with them, and then we have to avoid in that roadway. So that's what we want to avoid. So that's something that needs to be repaired sooner rather than later. So what's happening on Second Street, First Street Southeast right now is we've had several backups to the point where they had to open cut the roadway and they put in a patch, and that's what you see here on the top. They actually did a very nice job with this patch. It looks actually really good for saying it's probably only a few months old at the time. But you can see it is starting to hold up material here because no matter how good they do, there's still going to be a bump there, and that's going to hold debris, roots, wastewater, anything like that. So in time, we have another spot for a segment that we can avoid that. We want to do that. The bottom one here is not really trying to show you the roots so much as, there's probably a little sag in this pipe here that's holding up water. So you can see it's about, you know, maybe 20% full. And at that point, 20% isn't a huge thing, but again, that's slip, allowing for things to settle out in that spot, something we would absolutely want to avoid. All right, so that's enough sewer talk. Water main. So some of this area was not proposed for water main in the past, but we've since had some hydrant failures and leaks in the water system. Knowing that that water is probably not going to last long on this street, it's time to replace it. My apologies, I don't have to talk this much at home. So water main, so existing cast iron water main. So cast iron is commonly used all the way through the 40s and 50s into the 60s with ductile iron. Ductile iron is another product for a water main. The cast iron tends to be brittle, and they have problems where they are connecting at joints. So our cast iron systems are not, I don't know if they can be avoided. Storm sewers, you all know, there's not very much storm sewer in your neighborhoods in Richmond. And what that does piles or it puddles water, and creates faster roadways, you know, to make for our full life of the roadway. There is also no stormwater treatment, although I would argue that the water that infiltrates is being treated. So that's less of a concern. I may be losing batteries on this remote, on this microphone. Same picture again, but this time I want to highlight the blue. The blue is the water. A is the portion of your service in the street. There's a pipe running 10 feet away from the sanitary sewer. E is the curb stop that comes up in your yard. I mean, you guys know where those are in your yards. They allow to shut off the water if you need to for your home, or for non-payment, or things like that. If we need to access them and shut off the water to your house, that can be done. B is the portion that runs directly into your home. And that material is likely, likely copper. Could be cast iron, could be lead, plenty of different things that that service could be as well. When we dig those up, homeowners exactly what those are. How do we switch here? I'm ready. All right. Welcome to those on Channel 10 watching. All right, upper two most streets. I already mentioned this. So what's our plan here? So we're going to put the streets back there. We're going to center it in the right-of-way. We're going to put them back centered in the right-of-way. We are talking about adding concrete curb and gutter to help with that storm sewer, and that will actually have us widen the street. Oh, we're going to go to a 32-foot wide street, two lanes, and one parking lane. Sign the parking lane in town, but rather just let the volume. We don't have to really worry about which side people are parking on. It usually works itself out. If there's some problem with site. So eight inches gravel with three and a half inches of asphalt is pretty common in Richmond. It gets a really nice heavy section that lasts for a long time in our soils here. Sanitary sewer, we're going to reconstruct the eight-inch, 15-inch pipes that are on the streets. Whatever is what, we'll go back. Any manhole problems where there are brick manholes, where there's infiltration manholes, if they can be salvaged, we will absolutely do that to save costs on the project. So every city or every person that has a sewer service connected to this project will be from the main in the street up to, at which point we can let the homeowner decide. I'd like to go further. That'd be a for you to contractor to do that. So basically, we're going to be using a standard PVC pipe, most likely. Isn't going to let me tell them, tell the contractor what pipe to pick, but if I had to guess, it'll be a PVC pipe for both sewer and water. It's most effective. Again, I promised this map would come a bunch of times. So again, things are going to be put back exactly what we're talking about the sanitary sewer right now. It goes back where it went. If that's how it best serves your home, that's how it needs to stay. For the water system, this will be a heavier gauge, plastic pipe, pressure pipe, call it C900. And then more than likely, your service will be replaced from what's in the ground now, which may be, like I said, anything from copper or galvanized to a polyethylene service in the right-of-way line, at which point we'll tie in with a, we'll tie in with a fitting and get it back to the original condition after. We'll also be doing some work on the new water tower that was installed in 2002. Basically, there are some spot repairs that need to happen, and there's some ice damage on the inside that we're going to take care of with this. Those costs are not included in the assessments. Those are citywide costs. Those are not assessed to you guys, but they are part of the project. Again, same thing, like I promised. A, again, with everything with the water, we're going back in the same spot. These are not going to be extremely easy for you guys to see from your seats here, but these are the preliminary, the curb lines, the preliminary utilities for each area of the town. I'm not going to go through each one specifically because of the scale and not being able to see them, but this is the area that I fondly refer to as the school church neighborhood. I like to refer to them by neighborhoods more than naming all the individual streets. But as you can see, many of the streets that haven't been done in this area are going to be touched by this project. This is First Street Southeast. Again, that's, I call it, First Street Southeast Neighborhood. Three blocks of street and water main on First Street, and then about two blocks of sewer with some street on Hail as well. First Street North, or First Street Northeast, along with Lion, and again, King. And those, again, are improvements that are for water main, the hallway, sanitary sewer for a couple blocks based on televising and what we saw out there that's in batch. This is Third Street Southeast. This is the last segment of Third Street Southeast that was not completed with the 2008 project. It's a one-block segment, sewer, water, storm, everything. It'd be the worst street in town as far as street condition goes. That's a pretty tough spot. This is Oakwood Avenue. Oakwood Avenue runs on the east side of Centennial Park, and we've recently received a letter from Stevens County noting that we were going to start incurring additional maintenance costs because of our gravel roadways draining into their storm sewer. So we have included that on here, hoping to get some funding for it. Not a lot, like I said. A lot of people knew him affected by that one. And these, Fur Avenue and Third Street Southwest, now, these were included initially because of sanitary sewer problems in the past. We were able to actually fix that particular problem with a spot repair. They're still on here. It's listed as a street improvement only. It is possible that that could change with this project, but that is the case for this area here. All right, so why now? So we're worried about backups in sanitary sewers, the primary reason for this project. We have had problems in the past. We don't want to see them happen again, and that's the driver. We know that there have been water leaks in town. We know there are current water leaks in town that we don't find. We look at the water we pump versus the water we sell, and the water that we use for flushing. We underwrite that, and there's a discrepancy there, and that is a leak. Now, is it common for cities to have leaks? Absolutely. But they're at a higher percentage than we'd like them to be in town here, and we know that some of those are coming in these areas with the cast iron pipe. So by replacing that pipe, those numbers should improve. You know, the reason we don't see them is the gravel soils we have here, the sandy soils we have here are just infiltration in the ground, so that water doesn't work its way to the surface very readily. So pavement, as you guys well know, the pavement in this project is not in great shape. It is time. We can expect usually about 25 years of life out of a presumptuous roadway or an asphalt roadway. I know that these streets are much older than that, much older than that probably. And why do we get away with that? Because of those soils. I keep mentioning the soils in Richmond, and Richmond is built on top of either a sandbox or gravel, depending upon how you want to call it, which is a fantastic thing in my world. When I'm building streets, it's a much more cost-effective way to build a road on that than a heavy clay soil. So again, that's why we get longer life out of our streets, and that's why we fear putting old uti, a new street over old utilities, because we know that street's going to be good for 25 years at least. So why would we put it over something when we know we're going to have to dig it up? I noted that stormwater management is almost non-existent at this point. We pretty much rely on water runoff and infiltration in your yards. We'd like to make that more of a deliberate effort with storm sewer to collect the water and control that pavement so that we aren't seeing deterioration on the edge of the pavement, and that's the primary goal for that. And then we will also be treating that stormwater before discharge. Now, why is everybody here? What's it going to cost? So this is a list of the project costs. As you can see, we have a total project cost of about 4.4 million dollars. Certainly not a number to be taken lightly. It's a really big number. It's not something that any of us want to do, but as we noted, we're definitely getting there. And again, I'd like to point out that this does include the look at the water tower, but that does not include it in the assessments. So how do we assess in Richmond? Richmond assesses for streets, curb and gutter, and storm sewer by helping your lots. If you have a big lot, you pay a little more. If you have a small lot, you pay a little less. Water and sewer, you're treated based on your hookup. So you have one hookup, so we're going to charge you for one sewer and water. The benefit to your home is less, is really no more for a 50-foot lot or 140-foot. So that's why we do the each for water and sewer. It has been this way for the past two projects, 2008, 2014 as well. So consistency is huge, and that's the way we've done it in the past. So the city chooses, or the city must assess 20% at a minimum because we don't have the cash in hand to pay for this project. If we pay a lot in reserve, we wouldn't have to assess. But because we have to bond for the money or take a loan out for the project, we are required by state law to assess a minimum of 20%. Richmond assesses 25% as a target, and I can show you a little later that we aren't going to even make 25% say we're assessing 25% because you always lose some for various factors. The city as a whole will subsidize the remaining 75% of the project, as has been passed. So how do we calculate? So interior lots are, they're based on 100% of the benefiting footage. On corner lots, it's where it gets a little trickier. Corner lots, in Richmond, we pay the longer of the two sides. Even if you have projects happening on both sides, you pay the longer the two sides, only the other side is without cost to you. So how will, how long will we have to pay it? What will the interest rate be? Those are to be determined by the council, and they'll be based on what kind of money we get. If we get a bond at 2%, which is a fantastic interest rate, that's where things are running right about now, usually the city can get you money for about 2% higher than that. If you can find better money, absolutely, you're encouraged to pay it off on your own if you can find different financing. But the city's financing usually is between seven and 10 years, and the interest rates tend to be between 4% and 5% historically. So of the total project cost, how much are we assessing? About just over $1 million. $1,053,751.19. And I have the breakdown here on the water is $264,000, sanitary sewer about $194,000. As you can see, the primary around the street and drainage, just over, almost $555,000, and our curb and gutter at just over $40,000. So what our net assessment percentage right now, before I move anybody off, we're at 23.99 already. And like I said, that's why we go to 25% is because we got to keep that number above 20, and I know we will lose some going forward. So what is, what are the actual rates here? So we are doing water at $3,183.46 per unit. So if you have a standard home with a water service coming off our project, it'll be replaced to the right-of-way for you, and that'll be the assessed cost at $3,183.46. Sanitary sewer similarly, 37.33.81. It's on the top of your assessment room, the yellow box. Also, those numbers are in there. Street and drainage assesses at almost $42 a foot, and concrete and curb and gutter a little less than $4 per foot. An example calculation here, I might like to say that you probably can't read this out there, but this will be for a home, 100-foot lap, 142-foot lot, 100 feet wide, for 142 feet deep, which is a very common lot in Richmond. So you'd have a water assessment at the 31.83, sewer at 37.33, 100 feet of sewer of the street at 41.98, and 390 feet of curb and gutter for about $11,500 assessment. So that is a, absolutely, a large number that I'm not trying to sugarcoat around it. I don't want to diminish it or minimize it. It's a real number, and I really wish we didn't have to do it, but we do. So what's the next step? So tonight, we're doing the public hearing. If the council would move forward as fast as we possibly could, we'd start the design in March. A portion of this project has been designed in the past that'll help us, but most of it has not. We'd be looking to submit our design to our funding agency in June or July potentially, and we'd be looking at a mid-summer bid with the construction start hopefully this fall, but it could end up being spring depending upon how the contractors are looking for work and that kind of thing as it goes. So we know that it will not be complete this year, but we will not let a contractor start an improvement without finishing it. So if they, if they start a neighborhood, they're going to finish it before the, before the snow flies. All right, so what else do we do here? So I will answer questions directly. If you have a question specific to how the assessments are calculated, if you have a question about what's happening on an individual street, if you have comments in general about the cost or the total or the need for the project, the council will absolutely be willing to listen to those. We just ask that you come over to the podium, state your name and address so that they can take some notes onto who's talking about what. And then certainly, if you have specific questions about your lot in particular, you want to chat with me after the meeting, I'll certainly hang around and answer any of those, so I can talk individually. And then as the project moves forward, I expect to meet with many of you in your neighborhood and talk about your specific concerns at that time. and talk about your specific concerns at that time. So thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Uh, the more people we have, the better. Please take your assessment rolls home, share them with your neighbors. Uh, we want everybody to know the real numbers that are out there. We're not trying to hide anything. We don't want to hide anything. We want the real numbers to be known. So if your neighbor's not here, please grab a copy for him and bring it to him. Let's, uh, let's get the real things out on the street. So, uh, with that, I'm sure, I'm sure we have, uh, questions out there. Again, please walk over to the podium, uh, ask, ask your questions. I'll do my best to answer them. And if I am not, I'll get back to you with, uh, with an answer I don't have on the top of my head.
I'll break the ice on 31. Yeah, we received a letter from Lloyd Lucas who lives on, uh, 614 East Main. Regarding the road improvement on Oakwood Avenue, dear council members and engineer, I, I feel it's way too high, high because of the following reasons. We already have a new sidewalk and curb. It would be wasteful and ruin a, a big curb. And I'm sure the east side of road is city property and we feel that we, we shouldn't, shouldn't pay for the whole road twice. Hopefully I'm willing to reconsider the advice of our, of our road. Thank you council for your concerns.
And those are the exact ones that are addressed just that to the council. I don't know what to say about that. Uh, Pat, you have some questions?
Yes, I have a letter also from a concerned citizen with two or three different topics on here who didn't feel comfortable by addressing the council. So I told him and I heard that I would do that for him. Uh, one concern, who pays for the new paving roads and development of roads and new additions on the east end of town? Us residents could use the help too. If someone's going to develop those roads, they should be paying for it themselves. Any black money out there? You answered the question about the money.
Thank you.
Uh, when will this project get done? I think it's about two and a half years since the last meeting on this project. It probably won't get done this year. So it might be the fall of 2022 if we are lucky. Hopefully it gets done before a lot of people have sewer backups. Uh, and the last comment from this individual was that I hope we will put more sewer drains in J. Albany and First Street Southeast to Maple Street Southeast. Uh, the ground for the zoo at this time. This individual comes from the First Street Southeast area. Cause we're both concerned about the new foundation, drains. And then it's going to be found in the 300 grand set up there.
So I will certainly talk to the drains on First Street Southeast. Yes, that is a priority. Uh, the storm sewer drains on First Street Southeast, as the commenter noted, are non-existent. And we would much, much prefer that we do something to improve that drain to get that water away from those streets. And honestly, out of your yards, uh, right now, I'm sure a lot of you guys have lakefront property that you don't want. And we don't want, uh, we don't want that to stay in the future. Cause like I said, that's really hard on the edge of our roadway and it increases the rate at which it breaks up. Further questions?
Do I need to go over there? I'm Julie Flickson. I live on, uh, Third Street Southeast. And basically this same proposal was put before us three years ago. What happened to that? Cause I saw absolutely nothing going on in my street.
You are absolutely correct ma'am. The, uh, the, yes, you absolutely are. So this project was proposed, uh, with a very similar group of people. Uh, as a matter of fact, probably most of you in this room joined us in the fire station that evening in much warmer night in August, as I recall. And at that time, uh, the project didn't move forward for a short period of time. At which point the council was unhappy with the grant funds that were offered to us and decided to approach more grant funding to hopefully reduce costs. Uh, so yes, you are, you are correct. The project, uh, is primarily as proposed, uh, back then. Uh, the difference being we have taken Main Street off because that was completed by Stearns County. And we did, uh, an overlay on Ivy Avenue instead of the full replacement. So there are less people than were on the previous project. Uh, but, uh, again, primarily it is the same.
Hi, I'm Julie. I live on Second Street Northwest.
Excuse me, can you take your mask down and back please? Thank you. That's, yeah, thank you.
Okay. My name is Bonnie Leder and I live on Second Street Northwest. Um, this was supposed to go two years ago. And, uh, we had problems this past fall, summer with our sewer back now. And we had previously, that in 2002, we had dug up our front yard. And at that time we were supposed to cut it up with the city. But junior had said, no, you're not digging up the streets. You're going to butt it right here. So backed up sewer again in the basement how many times? Had plumbers come out, voted rudes line, uh, stuff like that. So now, um,
moving forward, is this gonna, do we have to pay for what we already paid for out of our own pocket?
Oh, so first of all, I apologize for the, uh, backups. I know that's not fun for anybody. I don't like to see them anymore than anybody else in this room. And I wouldn't wish them on anyone. That's a terrible message.
That's why we had them there in 2020 or 2002 because we had sewer backup at that point.
So your sewer backup then was between, in your private service? Yeah. And so that's been replaced since. And, and now the, the problem was at the connection to the city point? That's what it was? Yeah. And, and that's the exact thing we fixed with this. That, that's the exact problem that gets improved. As far as your question about getting credit for that, I leave it to the five kid, we were people in front of me. I don't get to make that call. Uh, but certainly I, I understand your concern and, uh, sympathize for sure. Because it's again, I wouldn't wish that on everyone. Thanks for your comment.
Scott Crone, uh, 231 Third Street Southwest.
Uh, I, I basically just have a question. Back when Grant was redone, I got assessed for the third street project and that was in 2004. So you had said that you expect streets from 20 to 25 years. So I guess the question I have is why is that street being overlaid again?
Uh, which person's comment?
Third Street Southwest.
Third Street Southwest. So, uh, again, any of these specific ones, we'll certainly take a look at. And if they, if there is want to remove them, we will do so. Uh, that one, like I said, was driven by sanitary sewer problem in that whole neighborhood. It wasn't overlaid with the, the big overlay project in 2018. And so that's why it remains. But I would be happy to meet with you and discuss the merits of that. Again, that's going to be a council action to, to determine whether that's worthwhile or necessary. But, uh, your concerns are appreciated.
Another question is, was Ivy, um, overlooked that, was that assessed?
That was not. So the city has not assessed for overlays in the past. Overlays are considered maintenance activity and they, they have not been assessed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any coming through on the chat, showing?
Present my mom, Bernice Evans. Kim Avenue and First Street North. Can you walk through? What's the payment terms on that for the individuals that are in this room? So, um, approximately $14,000. Is that a one-time payment, a five-year payment? How does that work? And is there interest on those dollars also?
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. Uh, yes, I can address that. So in general, the city council assesses that onto your property taxes over a period of time. Usually between seven and 10 years. I've seen it go as far out as 20 years. Yes, there is interest on that money. Uh, it will be based on what bond we get. So the city council will get money or the city will get money at, at such a rate. And then we get as close as we can to that rate for the residents and extend them basically a financing offer at that rate. So usually one and a half, 2% higher than our bond is the standard. And that's what I expect to see in the past. If we were to do it right to, right now, today, that'd probably be about a 4% interest rate on that money. Uh, paid, uh, with your first half, second half taxes through Stearns County. Uh, you would have the option to pay a portion or all of that upfront and obviously no interest to you. And we'd only charge interest on the portion that is actually financed through the county. So, uh, so yes, that payment will be taking place over a period of time. What that number is, is to be determined, but I would guess in the 10-year range is, is typical. Thank you for your question.
First Street Southeast. Question I put you saying putting in water drains or storm sewer drains, what type of drainage?
So the storm sewer drains would be a, very likely a concrete pipe leading to a, a storm outlet. Uh, in your area, I'm thinking potentially the right of way associated with a lion avenue that's not paved. Uh, we put something in over there that'll treat our storm water. So it'll be an actual storm water system with collection points at the low spots. And then we will pipe that storm water to a point where we can treat it appropriately and then discharge it back to the groundwater. There may be areas where a French drain would be appropriate because they work really well in this town. Uh, but we would focus on the storm sewer first, uh, with the attempt to move that water where we want to troll, control it. Storm sewer is going in anywhere we're putting curb and gutter, so vast majority of streets. Yep. So almost everybody will receive storm sewers included in the street. So the, the street category is street and storm sewer because I connect the two. I can't separate them. They're two, they're, they're directly connected. So no additional charge for the storm water is already included.
Anybody else wishing to address the council? Anybody else wishing to address? And for the third time, anybody wishing to address the council on the public hearing? Seeing none, um, the council has discussed that we're going to wait till the 18th to, to take action on it if we're going to move forward on this. And some of that is so we can have some more information from tonight's meeting to make sure everything is where the council needs to see it at. So if there's no other comments at this time, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period.
Any of our meetings are open meetings? I didn't notice it was on, sorry about that.
Any of the, our meetings are open meetings. So if you want to come back again, um, on the 18th at city hall, uh, feel, feel free to come back. Um, and everything too, we're more than welcome to have people here. Um, again, uh, if you have any more questions or any more concerns, um, it's a good time to kind of bring those up and everything during our meetings. So feel free to attend also.
That said, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, everybody.
Yep, thank you.